I hope it's all of the things here. A lot of each.
If we can call meeting back to order here. We're going to go to an adoption in the post closed session. We resolve this by a roll call vote. By can be resolved. That to the best of each board members knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from opening meeting requirements. And only such matters. As were identified in the motion to go into closed session were heard. Discussed or considered during the closed session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clinton.
Yes.
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 And if I could, Ms. White, if we can. Lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Please say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic to which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, I make if I could make a notes and. Notice we have two wonderful individuals. Towards the end is Walter Michaels representing the Blue Ridge District and Brandon Nicely. Representing Pink Castle District. Welcome.
Thank you.
And now, if we can. Going for a moment of silence. I certainly have things that I certainly want to pray for. And I know I certainly want to pray for our board, but. Also a second chance. Thank you. And at the present time, if I can. I'm going to step down from the chairmanship and appoint. Mr. Leroux as our temporary chair. Mr. Leroux.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Scott Horn and board members. Welcome, Mr. Michael and Mr. Nicely. And happy 2024 to all of you. Looking for our grand year. And now it's time to go through the process of electing the chair and the vice chair of the Board of Supervisors for Bonnettock County. So at this point, what I will end up doing is asking for nominations for the position of chair. And then we will vote on that. And then I will turn that back over to the chair. Who will end up asking for nominations for the vice chair. And move forward as as the meeting goes. So at this point, it's my pleasure to. Ask for nominations of chair. Mr. Michael.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Clinton for chair.
Okay. So the nomination of Mr. Clinton has been made. Are there other nominations?
Oh, a second.
I move that nominations be closed.
A motion has been made to close nominations. All those, is there any discussion? All those in. Need a second, I guess, on that.
I seconded it.
Okay, so we seconded the nominations be closed. Any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I think this becomes rudimentary, but we'll go ahead and go through the vote anyway for the chairmanship, which is. Or Mr. Clinton is the candidate for that. So at this point, we will go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor of Mr. Clinton be the chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Unanimous decision. Congratulations, Mr. Clinton.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Leroux. The next thing on the agenda is. Get to go through the committee assignments. We haven't.
Question. Say again. Vice chair.
Yeah, that's my apology. The next move, the next thing on the agenda is nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chair, if I could nominate Ms. White. For vice chair.
Dr. Scott Horn has nominated Ms. White. Any other nominations? I hear a motion to close nominations.
I move not. I move nominations be closed.
All in favor of closing nominations, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. And Amy White is nominated is our nominee for vice chair. All in favor of her being the vice chair, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries. Congratulations, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Now we have a committee assignments. We have a number of them to go through. And board members have the list of the of the committees and the potential members on each committee. The first one is board chairman and the second one is board vice chairman. Those two are taken care of. Next item on our list to. Select our representative is the Roanoke Regional Partnership Board of Directors. We have Ms. White for that. Are you? Care to do that? Okay, Supervisor White will be our representative on the regional partnership. The next one is the Social Services Board. Mr. Michael is proposed as representative on that board. Mr. Michael, you willing to do that?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that will be Mr. Michael for the Social Services Board. Parks and Recreation Commission. Dr. Scott Horn.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Planning Commission, Mr. Nicely is proposed. Is that still a good one for you?
Yes.
Thank you. Library and Board of Trustees, I'm proposed for that. And I'd be pleased to continue in that position. Transportation Safety Committee is Mr. Michael is proposed. Are you willing to do that, Ms. Michael?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Pat Board of Directors is also proposed to be Mr. Michael. That's a good one. I used to be on that. It's a good, good, good organization. Are you in favor of that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Economic Development Authority is particularly important one these days. Dr. Scott Horn, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Fire and EMS Committee. That's two people, Mr. Nicely and Mr. Michael. Proceed with that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission Transportation Planning Organization. We have Ms. White as as one of two people assigned to that. The second is still open. And I'll I'll open it now for anybody on the board that wishes to fill that position. And it goes hand in hand with the regional about with Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. Anyone stepping up for that? Mr. Michael, you and I talked about that. Have you reconsidered that at all? You wish not to?
No, my my plate's full. I'm sorry.
Sure.
My plate's full. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, what we're going to do to to not hold up this meeting, we'll leave that vacant. We'll reconsider it next month. And in the meantime, I'll I'll continue on it, but with no intention of staying on it for the remainder of the year. But. Transportation Organization Policy Board will leave open. One position, the other is Supervisor White. Next is the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. That also is Supervisor White and also has a vacancy. That, as I said, that generally goes hand in hand with the Transportation Organization. Anyone stepping up for that? Okay, let's keep that one in the Roanoke Valley and the Transportation Organization in mind for the next month and see if we can't. Assign someone. To join Ms. White on those two committees. In the meantime, I will do so. Next is the Agricultural Projects Committee. We have proposed for that. Supervisor Nicely and Supervisor White. That okay?
Yes.
Thank you. The next is Historic Greenfield Committee. I'm proposed to stay with that and I'm glad to do so. Similarly, with the next one, the Historic Properties Commission. I will, however, offer those if anyone is interested in those. I'll I'll continue with those two. General Fund Budget Committee. That's all board members. But the actual day to day work in 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 developing the committee is done by the Budget Subcommittee. Which is proposed to be me and Supervisor White. Good. School Budget Committee. Supervisor Nicely Supervisor Michael. We okay with that?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Parliamentarians, Mr. Leroux, Mr. Lockaby. You signed up for that? Thank you. Clerk to the Board is Mr. Leroux. Deputy Clerk to the Board is Ms. Bess. And that concludes. Our our assignments for committees and commissions. Any questions or any second thoughts on anybody's mind? Okay, we'll proceed with that. Next is adoption of revised bylaws. And they're in our package. I need to get to that. You tell what page what page is.
Seven.
How many?
Page seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, the first page. On the revised bylaws. Has revisions concerning the comment period. And I will read this just to make sure we understand. At the beginning of the agenda. This is in reference to all meetings of the Board of Supervisors. At the beginning of the agenda, there shall be a citizen comment period. Comment period, new verbiage. For the general, new word, public to address the Board of Supervisors on. The regular meeting topics specific to the agenda. And those words, regular meetings specific to the agenda are new. On any. No, the next are deleted. So so that's it. At the beginning of the agenda, there should be a citizen comment period. For the general public to address the Board of Supervisors. On topics specific to the agenda. Under the following conditions, and the conditions remain the same. So that's one revision. The other one is item. D. Actually do. Outline it. It's a little bit disjointed, but. This also has to do with citizen comment period. And I will read this. It's it's about a quarter of a page long. At the end of the agenda, there should be an additional citizen comment period. This is at the end of the agenda. For general comments not specific to agenda items under the following conditions. These persons shall limit their presentation to three minutes unless the board extends such time to individual persons. Another condition is recognition shall be given only by the presiding officer. No person shall address the board without having first. Been recognized. And finally cumulative or repetitive testimony is not generally permitted. On any matter and persons of the same position as a pre and persons of the same position, holding the same opinion, in other words. Lost my place here. As a previous member should, rather than. Restating previously stated positions, state their names and the position with which they agree. So so that's the kind of the common thing that we do. If somebody's already spoken, express your feeling. Rather than duplicating those those words and taking that time, we ask that people. Just state that they agree with certain points, but not not go through an entire lengthy discussion. And I will say I have a. I have a. Proposed change on that. And this was given to me by a citizen. And I happen to agree with it. And this is on, this is back on under citizen comment periods. Some paragraph C. Cumulative or I already read this in another matter, but cumulative or repetitive testimony is not generally permitted. And so on and so forth. Well. That is, as a citizen pointed out to me, that's a little bit harsh. To say not generally permitted. And better wording, I think, would be to say is generally not encouraged. That's a little bit softer and it doesn't run the risk of of abridging freedom of speech. So I'll stop here for the board and ask, and I'm going to move that we make that revision. Is that understood?
Understood. I'll second that.
Sir?
Second.
Second.
Yeah, okay. All right. You've heard the the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, so we'll make that revision. Okay. Now I'm back on the on. Just below item Z between D and A. On citizen comment periods, following the final citizen comment period, new verbiage. There shall be a board member comment time. And that will be at the end of the of the meeting. The only change there is for clarification following. The citizen comment period. Next bylaws go into hearings for which was no revisions and rules of order. No revisions. Regular meetings. If the chair or the vice chair, we added the word. They. Finds and declares. That the weather or other conditions. So this just gives, this is if we cancel a meeting due to inclement weather, it's. It's the responsibility of the chair or the vice chair. Participation means through electronic communication. No change. Amendments, no change. Close, this is the final item, closed session, still under the bylaws. Any non board, any non Board of Supervisors member. Attending that closed session shall sign. A non disclosure agreement, NDA, before entering the closed session. Agreeing that all information discussed in closed session shall remain confidential. A signed NDA shall be effective for one calendar year. So that's that's added verbiage. Any comments before I ask for a motion? Okay, so what this was again was revisions that are being made from experience this past year, revisions to our bylaws. I will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt the revisions. In the bylaws that contain in our package with the ultimate with with the repetitive. Revision that I made for. Not encouraging lengthy presentations, basically. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, gentlemen and lady. That passes. Next is adoption of the schedule. For the fourth Tuesday of each month, except December, when the meeting will be held in on December seventeenth, two thousand and four, two thousand and twenty four. Any. Any revisions to that, basically saying our meetings will remain the same the fourth Tuesday of each month. Except for the December meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard the motion and the second. To adopt the the schedule in our package. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next, we have introductions, item number four. And the first is the Electoral Board. Ms. Clark, I recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Today I have the honor of introducing or reintroducing you to Steve Vaughn. Who is. Our newest member of the Electoral Board. The Electoral Board is made up of three people. Two from the governing party of the governorship. And one from the next highest party. So we have two Democratic. Party members and one, I mean, I'm sorry, one Democratic and two Republican. Mr. Vaughn has previously served on the Electoral Board. He was. On beginning in March of two thousand and twenty. His first term expired at the end of December of twenty two. Which is then when Mr. Ed Clark joined us. And so because Mr. Hartwell's. Term ended at the end of December. And he has chosen not to seek reelection. Mr. Vaughn is coming on board again, and we are very happy. To have him back on the board with us.
Do we need a vote on that?
No.
Think so, yeah. Okay, the the next introduction is David Marmans.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm pleased to introduce to you Rich Evans. Rich, you are in standing. Rich is our new capital projects manager. He began work with us on January second. Rich comes to us with a wealth of experience and applicable training. He served in the Navy for eight years. Navy Nuclear. He completed his service as a reactor plant supervisor. He did teaching and education of reactor electrical students in the Navy. When he came out of the Navy, he came into the private sector. He has. A number of years as doing construction project management for various contractors and businesses. And he has hit the ground running with us, taking over our capital projects, the most notable one of which we currently have going on is the Circuit Court project. He has a bachelor's of science in mechanical engineering with a minor in engineering management. He's also a certified project management professional. So he's very well qualified. As I said, he's hit the ground running, doing great work for us so far. We're extremely pleased to have him. And very pleased to introduce him to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marmans. Mr. Evans, welcome. We're really pleased to have you. I will say your your reputation precedes you. Heard great things about what you've done already, and certainly as David just pointed out. Your credentials are outstanding, so we're really pleased to have you, sir.
Thank you for that. I'm very gracious to be here, and I sincerely look forward to doing a good job about that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Now recognitions and I will recognize Ms. Clark once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I mentioned before, Mr. Buck Hartwell. Has served on the Electoral Board since March of two thousand and nine. He has been an integral part of the operations of the office. I am very sad to see him go. When I first was appointed, a few years in, he started saying, well, I don't know if I'm gonna be. Seek re nomination. I was like, okay, you go, I go. You know, that's that's the way it works. He has been very supportive of me and my office. He has been very involved. He attends all the trainings with the state and the Virginia Electoral Board Association. And also he attends the trainings that I do for our election officers. And so I believe. Dr. Scott Horn has a resolution for him. And Buck, if you will come down.
Again, thank you for all the service. That you have given. Certainly some changes that happened since two thousand and nine, that's for sure. You're a part of this. So if I could read a resolution service. Thank you very much. Whereas in March two thousand and nine, Mr. William L. Buck Hartwell the third. A nomination by Bonnettock County Democratic Party. Was appointed to Bonnettock County Electoral Board by the judges. Of the twenty fifth Judicial Circuit Circuit Court of Virginia. And has served as a chairman, vice chairman and secretary during that time. And whereas during Mr. Hartwell's tenure of the Electoral Board. He participated in the recount of the Office of Attorney General from the November two thousand and twelve. General election. Oversaw the consolidation of voting precincts from seventeen to eleven to provide more. Cost efficient, effective elections, assisted in the decision to be one of the first localities in Virginia. That purchased newly certified optical scanning voting equipment to ensure a more secure. Election process. And participated in redistricting efforts as a result of a two thousand and ten. And twenty twenty. Decennial census. And also during his tenure, the county has seen more than ten thousand five hundred increase. In the number of registered voters from sixteen thousand ninety one. To twenty six five ninety nine. And whereas Mr. Hartwell has chosen not to seek reappointment to the Electoral Board after fourteen years of service. And whereas Mr. Hartwell previously previous service as Bonnettock County's Commonwealth of Attorney. And county attorney and as a longtime resident and active member of Bonnettock community, Mr. Hartwell has brought invaluable experience to Electoral Board. And enhanced integrity, efficiency, quality of the electoral process in Bonnettock County and. Now therefore be it resolved with the Bonnettock, the Board of Supervisors of Bonnettock County. Virginia, on behalf of Electoral Board, the Director of Elections and General Registrar. And all the citizens of the Bonnettock County does hereby extend sincere appreciation to Mr. William L. Buck Hartwell the third. For his service to the county as a member of Bonnettock County Electoral Board from two thousand and nine. Through two thousand and twenty three. Presented this day, twenty third of January, two thousand and twenty four. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Buck, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your many years of service, Mr. Hartwell. And that, that resolution outlined it well, but still just kind of scratched the surface when you get into all the details. So many years of public service, thank you. And it's, next I'll recognize Ms. Pendleton for two recognitions.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, welcome, new board members. I'm very pleased to have two recognitions to share with you today. The first is recognizing Matt Hall. So prior to joining community development, just in case you didn't know, Matt Hall served the Bonneton County for twelve years as a sheriff's deputy, and he also has operated his own company for years prior to joining us. Since he joined our team in March of two thousand and twenty-two, he's worked hard and learned quickly. Despite spending a majority of the year as one of only two inspectors of the, in the county, and despite conducting over two thousand inspections in two thousand and twenty-three, he's passed the four residential building inspection certifications, and I'm pleased to recognize his promotion to a combination building inspector two. This enables him to have more authority and ability to also begin commercial inspections and some plan review as well. So further, one of the things that Mark Bowles, building official, couldn't be here, he's at training on his own, but he didn't want me to, to note that he's been instrumental in assisting the building official on fire and EMS and building evaluation during emergency incident situations. So a lot of, a lot of great accomplishments, and I'm pleased to recognize him today.
Thank you.
I'm also pleased to recognize Matt Lewis, our code enforcement officer for successfully passing the exam for certification as a zoning official by the Virginia Association of Zoning Officials. CZOs are required to stay informed regarding innovations in land use, construction, environmental law, other laws and development trends. Through conferences, workshops, and the program, FZO provides the zoning professional with information and training on an annual break basis to help keep them in step with changes in the profession. Matt was able to pull this off despite conducting almost six hundred inspections of his own in two thousand and twenty-three, as well as countless plan reviews and supporting the planning and zoning office with daily operations, and also leading a team to apply for pass-through funding to support community, the community through grants and other departmental operations, so thank you.
Very good.
Congratulations both of you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pendleton. The final recognition we have is going to be administered by Chief Ferguson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joining me today is Lieutenant Michael Simpson. Michael has been with us for over eight years as a full-time employee. And back in October, he went through the processes of completing what we've brought others before this group called the Virginia Fire Officers Academy. It's a resident academy. Oftentimes it takes place for a week at the University of Richmond, but they also have one located at the Skeleton Center at the four H camp at Franklin County. That was the one that Michael was part of. That's a modified version that allows volunteer and career staff to be able to take it on a weekend basis. So a good mixture of candidates from across the Commonwealth. The mantra of that program is safety through leadership. And the entire program concentrates on how to be a better leader, how to, how to deal with leadership and management issues in, in a fire department and dealing with personnel on a daily basis. Mike serves as one of our fire engine lieutenants at the Reed Mountain Fire Station, just wanted him, I wanted to bring him here before you and congratulate him for his achievement.
Congratulations.
And that, that program was how long?
Two different, two full weekends.
Two full weekends, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, appreciate your, continuing your education for us, thank you very much. I'm going to move up to an earlier item that I managed to skip. And this is item number, number two on the agenda, consider approval for board member to be, to electronically participate in meetings. And this falls to Mr. Lockaby.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that, and I'm sorry that we didn't get to that when we initially adopted the agenda. The issue, that is, I believe for Dr. Scott Horn to participate remotely tonight. I would suggest that you take that up at the beginning of the six P M. Session when he actually has, is actually seeking to participate remotely at that time.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. I will say, however, while we're on that topic, to Dr. Scott Horn, first, thank you for your services, Chairman, excellent service, dedicated.
Thank you.
And on top of things, and kind of fun too, you made it long, so. And he gave me his permission to mention this. The reason he won't be in, in tonight's meeting has to do with his recovery from a cardiac incident back in December. And he is recovering remarkably well. Wouldn't know anything happened to you about that.
Thank you, thank you so much. It certainly has been a pleasure serving the board and the citizens. And I thank you for the support. Thank you also, the citizens, for the support that they give me during a difficult time, so thank you very much.
You did well. Next is one of the things we talked about in the bylaw provisions, and that is the citizen comment period. This is for items specific to the agenda. Any citizens have comments like to make? Okay, thank you. Next is consent agenda, which contains just the minutes of the regular meeting. Have the board members had a chance to see those, to see it, I should say? Are there any comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve, to approve the consent agenda.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Been moved in second, approve the consent agenda? All in favor, is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Now I recognize Mr. Zarilla, approval of transfers and additional appropriations, hello, Tony.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, so I'd like to recognize Dr. Scott Horn for his service as board chair.
Thank you.
And prior. And I'd also like to welcome back Mr. Clinton as board chair.
Thank you.
And I'd like to wish and, and wish the best to the two new board members nicely, and Michael, so welcome. That's all I got, no. For the month of January, there are no transfer requests with respect to appropriation requests, there are six pass-through appropriations being requested. Pass-through items one through six represent expenditure reimbursements, miscellaneous fees and receipts, contributions, and insurance funds. The largest is an appropriation to Sheriff's Department utilizing sheriff's impressed funds to purchase the two thousand and twenty-three Nissan Pathfinder, and being expenses capital outlay. It's a, it's a vehicle item. Is it respectfully requested that these appropriations be approved by the board? Are there any questions?
Any questions for board members on transfers and appropriations?
Mr. Chairman, if no questions, I move for approval.
Thank you, I have a second.
A second.
Been moved and approved, and seconded that we approve the transfers and additional appropriations. Any discussion? If you're in favor of that, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next is Mr. Blevins and the VDOT monthly update.
We've got accounts payable.
Accounts payable, yeah, yeah. Go, I'm sorry, Mr. Blevins, getting you on sooner than you have to. Tony, if you proceed with accounts payable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Total expenditures being requested for approval for January for the general fund, including debt service and all other funds was a combined five million ninety-nine thousand three ninety-eight oh five. The largest payable is a payment from the Capital Projects Reserve, Capital Projects Fund, to Motorola Solutions in the amount of three million three fifty-two seven thirty-four, representing a twenty-five percent payment as per contract for services and equipment for the public safety radio system replacement project. Other payable disbursements of note for the month are as follows, under the Sheriff's Department, three forty-three one eighty, paid to Shehe Auto Sales for eight two thousand and twenty-three Ford police interceptors, under local health department, one oh two three forty-seven paid to the Bonneton Health Department for the third quarterly operational support payment. Under community development, twenty-six thousand five hundred paid to Star Valley for demolition of an Eagle Rock structure. Under fire and EMS, sixty-four four sixty-two paid to Penn Care for a two thousand and twenty-three Fastlane EMS command vehicle. Under community organizations, forty-six nine twenty-nine paid to Visit Virginia Blue Ridge for the third support payment for F Y twenty-four. And finally, under Sheriff's Traffic Safety Program Fund, forty-three six thirty-two paid to Shehe Auto Stores for a two thousand and twenty-three Ford F one fifty responder super crew vehicle. Are there any questions or comments related to the accounts payable expenditures being requested for approval for the month of January?
Board members, any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
If no questions, I would ask for approval.
Thank you, Supervisor Mike. Scott Horn, second, anyone?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Tony, I'll just ask you, anything out of the ordinary, is still kind of going along in a steady state?
I mean, it's, it's exciting that we're, we're starting to get going on the radio replacement project. It's been a long time coming, as, as board members know, and, you know, we're finally getting that rolling. And we've got, you know, we've got support in place, and there'll be a point in time where we will seek financing in the future for it at the proper time. So that's, that's the biggest item that, that we have, and we did purchase a lot of vehicles this month, but they were as per budget, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The motion is on the floor, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We've approved the accounts pay, or transfers and additional appropriations. Accounts payable. Now, Mr. Blevins, VDOT.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me, keeping me on my toes. So for this month on our agenda, we said we're, we're done with the yearly servicing contracts, they'll start back again in the summer for two thousand and twenty-four. As far as traffic engineering work orders, we've got two work orders submitted to our traffic engineering staff to review speeds. One is on Timber Ridge Road in the McCannon area, the other on Back Creek Lane also in the McCannon area. The second one is, it's something we submit because we completed the roll rustic, so they, they review those for posting. They can be automatically posted for thirty-five, but they can review it for less. So that's what that was going on, and then we've got a number of land development projects in review or have been reviewed. We're going to try to reduce that list because some of these have been on here for a while. As for permits, we're, we're looking at fourteen permits for the last month, mostly utility permits and private connect, private entrances. No, no major new commercial entrance permits. As far as maintenance, it's, it's very typical for this time of year, mostly we've been dealing with snow for the last week or so. Mother Nature was kind to us in December, but came after us this month so far. You know, and on top of that, grading and on gravel roads and a few, even still a little bit of trimming here and there for sight distance. We're doing patching ahead of our schedules for the summer as weather permits. And, you know, brush and tree removal here and there, and, you know, ditching and, and any pipe replacements that we have, again, any, anything weather permitting. Aside from that, I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has, or if I can address anything that, any maintenance issues that you have in your areas.
Any questions? I'll go down the line here specifically.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you for your prompt response to our citizens' complaints on items, and especially giving me a timeline of when these different projects will be addressed. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Actually, anything?
I don't have anything for you this month, nothing yet.
Supervisor White?
Shockingly, no. You got two Buck Cannon projects on here, so.
I got you, yeah, we're, we're working, we're working for you anyway, so.
Thank you.
It's up to you and me, Dr. Scott.
I do have one thing, you know, there is, the Water Authority had done some, some great work, and, and I appreciate the work, appreciate the, the things that are going to be coming out of that as well. So the bad news is that the repatching of the roads have really been subpar, I think. I know, is that, is that going to be resurfaced, or is that going to be fixed at some, somehow, somewhere?
A lot of the patches right now are temporary. We did address that with them, and we've got, we received a work order from the citizen about one of the patches specifically, and one of the entrances of the subdivisions there on Sanders. I know that our land use staff reached out to the Water Authority and their contractor about taking care of that. Again, this time of year, paving plants are closed, they're using probably aqua fault or, you know, some, some temporary patching material that doesn't always last very well to real traffic, you know. Driveways are fine, but, you know, for us, it just keeps the water out, that's all we're trying to do till, till it gets nicer weather. So they are required to do better patching for later.
Okay, thank you.
Just, nothing from Amsterdam, but I do have a question, comes just curiosity. Each year, VDOT has a budget and I guess an actual stockpile of material for inclement weather, clearing roads and, and urea and all, whatever else you might use. How does it look, and you may not know, but I'm just curious if that's drawing down after the last week, or?
Yeah, we, we get, we get a lot of the budgets, specifically for snow and specifically for maintenance. If we overspend snow, we just start spending maintenance money. We, Robin and I were just talking about that on the way here. We're, we're not too far along into the year, so it's, it's still a little hard to tell, plus these last couple of storms were thankfully small. But because we didn't know exactly how bad the impacts were going to be, we're, and it's early in the, the snow season, as it were, where we mobilize a few more people than we normally would, just in case, which was a good thing last Wednesday, Monday, because we, we did a little more than we were planning, especially during the P M. Peak hour. But I think we're still good, yeah, and, and again, worst thing happens is we spend our snow budget, we start spending some of the maintenance, but maintenance budget for later, which gives us a little less money to do some things with for other things, pipe replacements or, you know, patching or something. It wouldn't take away from, from something like a guardrail replacement or the paving schedules that we have. Those are separate pots of money, and, and Central Office has taken great pains to separate those so that we don't mix them or take away from those.
So the excess at the end of the season just goes over to the same budget for next year?
You mean for, for projects or for snow?
No, for snow.
For snow, again, the excess we can, sometimes we can roll it into our maintenance budget and use it for things this year. If not, Central Office can sweep that and then reallocate it later. It, it really depends on, on how they want to do things for us. The last few years, they said if we had any snow money left, especially last year, we were able to spend some of that in pipe replacements, paving, some, some roadways, doing some patching. And, 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 you know, again, we're spending more, but we've got more contractors to help us now, so. But still, if we have any left, that was the ability this year, not a hundred percent sure about that, but we can use that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, can I ask about a project not in my district? So we talked a lot last month about the Fieldstone traffic light. I'm still hearing a few things about that, I don't know if others are. But one idea that was asked of me, if you're traveling south on two twenty, and you're approaching the light, we have the flashing light that tells us if the light is red. Is there any way that flashing light that warns you of a red? Is there any way that flashing light that warns you of a red light, could that be moved further north? So that, or even a second one, so that there is not that around the curve surprise. I know we're within the limits. I, I know we're, we're meeting the regulations as they're written. But is there any way to have an additional layer of safety and warning?
Similar to last month, it, again, not going to say those are completely out of the question. Um, but, uh, but right now, VDOT doesn't have any funds to do that. Um, I'm sure that the developer wouldn't want to pay for that. Um, so I, I'm not going to say no, but if that became, if it becomes a problem, if we see that there's like extensive amount of rear ends um, or, or crashes that we're not anticipating, um, you know, the, the rumble strips you talked about last month or an additional set of lights could be possible. I, I don't know of two sets, but I'm not going to tell you it doesn't happen. Um, but at least for right now, um, it, it, you know, it, it appears to be operating as, as anticipated and as designed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further for Mr. Blevins? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, I will recognize Mr. Baker, and this is Consider Resolution requesting two streets, Broad Street and Charter Avenue in the Daleville Town, Daleville Town Center, requesting that they be taken into the secondary system. Mr. Baker.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. Warm welcome to our new members. Um, for your consideration today is a request that Broad Street, Route eleven ninety-three and Charter Avenue, Route eleven ninety-four, both located in the Daleville Town Center, be taken into the state's, uh, secondary system of highways. VDOT has reviewed and approved both streets and they are eligible to be taken into the system. Um, that's all I have. Not much to it. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
How does this come up now? They've been there for a long time. Do you know why it didn't hurt anything, but why didn't this happen?
With the town center, um, the goal is, is eventually for every street to be taken into the state system. So as they're being built, there's just a, a number of items that VDOT, um, they have to be built to the VDOT standard. So VDOT inspects that. Work at the county are kind of the middlemen um, as far as that process goes, but we're at that point now to where every improvement VDOT needs has been made. Um, so that's why it's ready to be taken into the state system and VDOT is ready for it. If you all approve it today.
Okay. Are there any questions? Well, ask for a motion first. We have the resolution before us. Is there a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chairman, if they can, uh, move to adopt the attached resolution.
Dr. Scott, Scott Horn has moved for adoption. Is there a second?
The second.
Mr. Nicely, a second of the motion that lies before us. Is there any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries and those streets are adopted into the VDOT system. More streets to clear, Mr. Blevins.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And the next item is number uh, twelve, Consider Resolution to Initiate an Economic Development Access Program Grant, it's a grant for, through the Economic Development Access Program with VDOT for this, for the extension of International Parkway. And I will recognize Mr. McFadden. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, welcome Supervisor Nicely and Supervisor Michael, uh, and ladies and gentlemen, the audience. Uh, you have a resolution for you to be submitted to the Commonwealth Transportation Board with VDOT to initiate a project to extend International Parkway here at the Bodata Center at Greenfield to extend it from its existing terminus and cul-de-sac uh, to Lot Three, which is a project with the Business Ready Sites Program under the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. We have received a Virginia Economic Development Partnership Grant previously to develop Lot Three and this project to initiate the road extension is also part of that. So what this resolution would do is to initiate that request of VDOT for funding, uh, to accomplish the road extension. And, uh, you've got a corrected memo, uh, in hard copy in front of you and, uh, wanted to just clarify a few things. The previous estimate for the road construction is eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. And, um, we have, uh, received further information from VDOT this morning that final cost estimates and funding requests, well, this is what we had reported previously, final cost estimates and funding requests are underway and the Board of Supervisors will be kept informed. And revised VDOT program funding guidelines can allow the county to request seven hundred thousand dollars in unmatched funds and up to an additional one hundred fifty thousand dollars in match funding. So, uh, we are putting together the cost estimates that will then go into this, uh, funding request from VDOT and the Commonwealth Transportation Board, but essentially this resolution uh, gets that project started. And so I would be happy to take any questions or provide any additional clarification.
Board members, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other questions, uh, I move for the adoption of the attached resolution.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion? Oh, well, I have a question. Um, this is obviously boilerplate, mostly boilerplate on the one, two, three, four, the fourth, whereas references made to the, uh, Economic Development, comma Airport and Rail Access Fund.
Yep.
Sure there's a reason for that, but can you explain the connection?
Yeah, that, that would be the formal name of the program to which we would be seeking funding. But it is the Economic Development Access Program that we're, uh, requesting the funding from VDOT to, uh, to fund this road construction.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. We have a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McFadden.
Thank you.
Next is Fire and EMS Strategic Plan. Chief Ferguson.
It's working.
Awesome, thank you. Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, happy two thousand twenty-four. Uh, I'm excited, uh, to have the opportunity this afternoon to share with you uh, an overview of, uh, what we worked on during the last quarter of, uh, calendar year two thousand twenty-three, uh, to really help set the foundations and framework for the next, uh, four to five years for Fire and EMS. Uh, so with that, uh, what I thought I would do is provide you a brief overview of the strategic planning process. Uh, the actual hard copies have not, uh, hit my office yet to get to you. I'll make sure to get you the full electronic version as well as the Fire and EMS stakeholders. I did inform them at our last commission meeting earlier this month that we were having the presentation today and that the document would be forthcoming to them as well, but uh, they got the same preview, uh, in essence that you're getting. So basically in early two thousand twenty-three, uh, the Fire and EMS stakeholders volunteer career, we've all talked about the need for strategic plan for some time. Uh, the last time Fire and EMS was, had a third party look at, at how we were doing business was in two thousand twenty-four as we transitioned, uh, from what was the Department of Emergency Services to the Department of Fire and EMS. And so really, uh, timing was the, of the essence here in that everybody was ready to have these conversations and really look towards the future. Uh, so throughout two thousand twenty-three, the big thing was figuring out who would we get to come in and take a look at us. Uh, certainly, these are, uh, scenarios where you can wind up spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on, on something that's very extensive and that was not really something anybody was, was interested in. Uh, we found what was called the, uh, Technical Assistance Program through what's known as the Center for Public Safety Excellence. They do Fire and EMS accreditation programs around the globe. Uh, they're familiar to the fire service and it's fire service leaders that help guide the program, uh, and, and the process. Uh, so that's who we selected, uh, to go with. And, uh, they brought forward, uh, some industry leadership to help us kick this off and, and make it, uh, flow as it did. So they identify this as a community-driven strategic planning process. So we started in this room, uh, with the community on the first day. Um, after an initial briefing of how this project would work, uh, we hit the ground trying to find community stakeholders that would be willing to give of an hour and a half of their day to come here and listen to the two facilitators talk about what Fire and EMS services were, the general types of services that we provide, and then go through a couple of exercises of basically ranking them based off of their fundamentals and priorities as to, as to what mattered most in, in their view, from their viewpoints. Uh, we had general citizens, we had business leaders, school officials, law enforcement, just a very sundry of folks in the room. And, uh, there were thirty-two people that came out during the middle of the day on, I believe it was a Tuesday or a Wednesday. So we were very thankful. Uh, the CPSC staff were, uh, very excited about the number of folks that came out because obviously they do this all across the country and some places they don't get a handful. So uh, we were very thankful for that. And then the following three days, uh, twenty-three Fire and EMS stakeholders, all the different volunteer agencies, uh, when we put this out to the volunteer chiefs, uh, the emphasis was on, it doesn't matter if they've been here twenty years or two years. If they're interested and are willing to fulfill the seat, we would like them to be your representative. And thankfully, that's what we got. We got a broad swath of career and volunteer, folks that were very tenured, folks that were relatively new and different levels within the organization from chief officers to just firefighters, and we even had a couple of brand new graduates from the academy in, in the group, fresh, different perspectives, not entrenched in any particular, you know, tradition or, or the way it's always been. So we participated in a three-day process together, uh, really working through, uh, an assundry of things. The first was the framework of the feedback and the rankings from the community input as well as every single comment that had been captured from that input process. And, and so that's where we started was with the community feedback and priorities. Uh, we did a brief exercise with a mission statement that we already had just affirming that it was the right one and if there needed to be any revisions or rewording. Uh, and ultimately you'll see it was relatively just renewed. Uh, but, but an area that we did not have until this strategic plan was put together, we did not have a vision statement. Uh, certainly something that needed to be cultivated by the group, not by any individual, not by my office. We now have a vis- vision statement to share with you as well as organizational values. Another area that we were lacking collectively as the whole, as the system, we had never done an exercise that put forward what are our values. So now we have a mission, vision and values that we can uh, emphasize and commit to and, and use as, uh, the litmus test for a lot of things that we do. And then outside of those, the next step, which I think you'll see is really the living piece of this document is the overarching priorities. So what are the priorities to carry us forward into the next few years? And then some objectives and tasks that were associated to go with those. And, and the picture there, that's the team that spent three days together, uh, at one of the local churches here in Finn Castle. So this is the cover. This is our strategic plan that you'll be getting a copy of. Uh, and what I'd like to do is just give you a couple of the nuggets that, uh, came out of this in terms of mission, vision, values and priorities. Uh, so you'll see here our mission statement, the combined agencies of Bodata County Fire and EMS will deliver prompt and professional services to the community to ensure the protection of life, property and the environment. Uh, that, that truly is what our mission has been since we did an exercise back in oh eight uh, at Greenfield Elementary back when we did our very first Fire and EMS study together. Um, the group molded over about specifically the combined agencies, whether we were one or multiple still. Uh, and, uh, the, the common, uh, consensus was that it was a combined group. Uh, so that's why it remained the same and ultimately was just reinforced. Our mission remains the same. Uh, our vision, as I said, the vision statement is brand new. Uh, the Department of Fire and EMS is a combination system comprised of highly skilled career and volunteer responders. We aspire to meet the evolving demands of our community through innovation, compassionate engagement and a rapid delivery of premier services. And then, uh, next, uh, is certainly our, our values. Really, again, the litmus test that we can check each other on a lot of things as we talk through some of the priorities and, and have tough discussions and debates about things that really carry the organization forward. Integrity, a delivery of reliable, trustworthy services with honor and compassion, dedication, service to the community through collaboration with perseverance and passion, innovation, embracing change and adapting to the evolving needs of the community, unity, commitment to a professional family atmosphere and then accountability to the community and each other through our actions and intentions. So that's our mission, vision and values. And the other area, uh, of goals, which I was speaking to, that will be really the living, breathing, working component uh, that we will continue to work on, the implementation of the strategic plan over the next several years, uh, are listed here. Uh, number one is improving service delivery to, uh, address anticipated community growth and community expectations throughout the county. Improving department communications at all levels to ensure adequate and timely dissemination of information. Uh, optimizing all available funding to meet the expanding service demands of the organization and the community. Enhance the Fire and EMS training program to ensure responders are proficient in handling diverse emergency situations rapidly, efficiently and safely. And then last but certainly not least, reduce community risk through the implementation of strategies designed to lessen the impact. So really, uh, what I'm most excited about is the number one thing that flushed out as our number one priority is improving service delivery and taking a look and focusing our efforts on the service delivery of today. Is it meeting our community's needs as the community continues to grow and evolve? Or are there gaps? And if there are gaps, how do we address those gaps? Uh, and then certainly each one is valuable in its own, in its own way. Uh, but I was very happy to see that service delivery, which it should be the number one thing that we're focused on, is already providing the services to meet our mission. And I'm happy to answer any questions before I move on. So what's next? Um, the next component of this, they also produced, CPSC also produced a management implementation guide that basically takes our priorities and defines, which was a group exercise, defines the various objectives and tasks underneath those goals. And then a checks and balances to develop performance measurements so that we can measure outcomes associated with anything that we implement as a group. And obviously some of those I think are very much, uh, Fire and EMS operationally centric that the group can develop consensus on with the commission and the Fire and EMS Executive Board, and some of them fundamentally are policy decisions that will come back before you all as we go through the process. So just in summary, um, th- this is something I had, uh, Taylor in our office designed for us to try to, to put some commitment to, uh, our core values and, and remind us of what they are in kind of refreshing our brand a little bit. But ultimately, uh, I think it was a, a well-established process. There was citizen engagement, there was Fire and EMS stakeholder engagement. And we all left, uh, at the end of those three days together, feeling as though there were fingerprints all over the future of the system. Uh, folks were happy, decompressed, you know, we had some really good, uh, debates and discussions. Uh, but I think it was a renewing of some energy of, of folks. They were able to get some of their concerns off their chest, but but also learn from others and create a better understanding from all facets of our department and the service delivery that we provide. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's just a brief overview of the process.
Very well done, Chief. When do I get our medallions with that logo?
Soon.
Good. That's pretty neat. Was that done commercially?
Taylor Lunsford, our recruitment or retention person, she has expertise in graphic design. I don't ever have to go outside of the office to get this type of work.
Now we know.
Huge asset.
I'll open the floor to questions and comments from board members.
First of all, thank you. The strategic plan is probably well-needed and well-deserved. Fantastic work. Thank you for the citizens that also participated in this. So again, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Getting this together.
What, great work, and it's good to see that in print. And I love the values on the logo. That's really nice. What dissemination plans do you have for this? And also, are there specific metrics that you will evaluate and then that will take you to another phase?
Certainly.
Usually strategic plans are ongoing.
Absolutely.
Sit on the shelf.
You're exactly right. So as far as communicating the document, my plan is to communicate that to you all and the fire EMS chiefs first so that there's a read-in into what it will be, and then it will become openly public to the world. I do intend to get it to everyone that was a stakeholder in this room involved in the process because that was a question at the end of our community stake. Will we receive feedback? Will we see the work that was put into this? And the answer was absolutely because certainly it is available. It's a very easy read. And I think it is put together in a way that makes sense for someone that has no background in what we do to understand the process and how we arrived at the decision points that we did. As far as next steps, the management implementation guide, which is a separate document, I'm happy to share. Basically, it puts those priorities into, like, let's just say, the improved service delivery. We created objectives like 1.1 through 1.4 on what areas of service delivery we want to take a look at. And for each objectives, there was a set of tasks that we also created together as a group. And we put rough time estimates of if we start this priority and begin task 1.1, how many months do we think is the milestone to check that as to whether or not we've completed it? And the intention is to basically get some of these folks that have already participated in the whole process to carry on the work of the process by meeting in smaller groups with these particular objectives and tasks to help us move it forward in all the different priority areas. So the reason I wanted to bring it to you now, even without the physical print, was to start the year off on that foot and go ahead into February and start working on implementing some of these tasks and some of these groups to move it forward and keep it alive.
Thank you.
Anything else? Board members, questions, comments?
I hear nothing but good things. And I certainly know that your staff is double-trained, correct? Fire and EMS. That's unusual, and that says a lot for your department.
Thank you.
Very well done, Chief. One of the things that I liked, well, a lot of things I liked about it, but one in particular is in the values you incorporate, I think, three comments about growth. It may not have been in values, but one of the other titles, growth, that you're prepared to adapt to growth because it's your reality.
Yeah, absolutely. And growth and the change of the community was at the forefront of the conversation because I don't think it matters career volunteer or which segment of the community folks were coming from. We all recognize that the community has changed at a rapid clip that we may not, as a system, have been evolving to meet those demands. And certainly, we're not an area of public service that we want to get behind in providing for those services. So definitely at the forefront of the conversation.
You may have said this, and I may have missed it, but what was the mix of volunteers and page staff on the group?
In the twenty-three people? It was about sixty, forty career volunteer.
Pretty close. Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll just offer hearty congratulations and best wishes for continuing with it. More work to be done, but you've got a great start.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Appreciate it. Welcome to the board and certainly welcome to the fire EMS committee. Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Chief.
Next is Ms. Pendleton, Apex Monthly Update.
Chairman and board members, good to be back here again. The response that I have today is no different than the response that I've shared with you over the past two months in that we had generated onsite comments back to the applicant some time ago and the off-site plan review, which is the road network and improvements needed to improve the roads to the site. That's still under staff's review. That's still under my review. And there's no reason for that other than it's a capacity issue. It's just kind of hard to sit down and take the time to look through several thousand pages at a time. We also knew that, you know, they're still working on some other permitting through the state and the Army Corps. So just continuing to try to get that to the top of the list to be able to generate those comments so that they have the full, complete package of onsite and offsite comments back to them.
Thank you. Any call or questions?
Just a brief question. Do you have a number of, how many unresolved site plan issues that you are waiting for Apex to address? Or is that what you're evaluating now with what you have?
So, you know, what we generated back or what Gail Carter Development Services Coordinator, Development Review Coordinator, generated back to Apex back in November was twenty-four onsite comments from both VDOT, EMS, and the zoning office. And then the onsite comments, which again is up to me to review. There were, I looked at it just before I came in here, there were eight comments from zoning. One of them, I can say, has been addressed. That was a redundant comment that should have been deleted previously. So that's where we are now.
And do you know if they've gone back and forth multiple times, same comments?
A couple of them have. You know, again, we're talking about thousands of pages of information. So yes, there are times when certain comments are not addressed and we have to make the comment that, you know, previous comment not addressed. There are some comments that are generated by changes in the development plan or conversations that then result in a change in their process. So, you know, they come in and out, they come and go, some stay. It's not ideal, but it's not atypical.
Right. And I think I've asked you this before, but just to clarify, there's no limit by law or regulation how many times plan sets can go back and forth for any project, not just this one?
No, and that's a great question, Ms. White, because one of the things that we've been working with is how do we deal with quality control across the board? I'll just say, you know, on the record, we've seen across the board decline in quality of plans. And I think it's just a similar nature as we have in our office. It's just a capacity issue and a lack of time and resources to do things. And so, you know, one of the things that we've addressed that hopefully we will look at is if we do a future fee scheduling, which we talked about last month, amendments to the fee schedule. One thing we'd like to propose is a re-review fee. So you get two or three sets of comments, but after that, you pay the initial fee again. And I hope that's going to help cut down on the amount of re-reviews we have.
Right. Because that's a matter of efficiency.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Supervisor White. Great questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Anything else from board members for Nicole before she leaves? Okay, we have only a couple of things left. And what I propose we do here, we'll do appointments, citizen comment period, board member comments, and then we'll take a break prior to Mr. Lockaby. This is a compliment. This is not. Prior to Mr. Lockaby's long-awaited Freedom of Information Training. So we'll take a break in just a few minutes. Next item is appointments. First, consider appointment of Mr. Joe Thompson to the Board of Equalization. This is in replacement of Robert Omer.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that appointment indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Thompson is appointed. The next appointment is consider appointment of Murray F. Buddy Buchanan, Buchanan III, to the Parks and Recreation Commission for the Finn Castle District.
Move for approval.
Dr. Scott Harz, move for approval. Is there a second? That one goes, it's passed, and we will appoint Mr. Buchanan. Next item, as discussed earlier, under the bylaws, citizen comment period. General comments, not necessarily related to the motion. Well, this one will be. Okay, is Fay Waldron here? Okay, welcome, ma'am. Come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton, and to my representative, Ms. White, who I respectfully did not let you know I was going to be speaking, but thank you. Anyway, to the board, this is an issue that has been pending since nineteen eighty-two. It only came to my light in two thousand twenty-two. In two thousand and two, I was sitting at the Thanksgiving dinner table with my uncle and father. And my uncle had just moved to Buchanan or Springwood from New York. And he said he had too many taxes. And so he threw up the bill and he said, anybody wants it, you know? And I said, I'll take it. And the bill was for that particular lot that you see there in the picture. I had no idea that since nineteen eighty-two, when my uncle Lehman bought the property from the Logan family, that Bodotac County had put Lot twenty-two as his property, as a parcel. Lot twenty-two is nowhere mentioned in my deed. What is mentioned is the lot next to Lot twenty, and it refers to Lot twenty-one. Bodotac County, my uncle didn't notice it. My dad didn't notice it. He paid the bill for years. And the only reason I noticed it was when I retired from government work, came back here in two thousand twenty-two and tried to get the building inspected so I could improve it. They told me I could not get it inspected because my name wasn't on it. I went through all types of hoops and ended up with Chris Booth and Lisa May here in this office. And they, even though my deed says that Lot twenty-one is mine, they refused to change it. And I've tried and tried to no avail. So I'm just asking for your help to get this family property back in the family as soon as possible. It's blighted property. It's on the African-American Historical List. My uncle and my father purchased the property back in nineteen eighty-two because they have been having their lodge meetings, Masonic Lodge meetings there since the nineteen fifties. The Lot twenty-two is just a vacant piece, strip of land. Lot twenty-one is a place where my father and my relatives had those Masonic Lodge, Lebanon Lodge, number eight meetings for decades. That's our property. We want to improve it. It was an embarrassment. Bodotac, Buchanan put boulders in the driveway. They destroyed the driveway to put a five-hundred there. I've cleaned it up. I've cleaned the forest of trees, even though I didn't have access to it, to the lot with the driveway. I'm doing my due diligence. I just want the land put back in my family's name.
Well, that's certainly a perplexing issue for you, I'm sure. Sorry this happens. Mr. Lockaby, are you attuned to this at all?
I think this is the first time I've heard about it, but I think that we can certainly, I'll probably talk with Chris Booth tomorrow and maybe take a quick glance at the land records if we can get this lady's information.
I'm sorry. Could you say that again?
I'm sorry, and probably take a quick glance at the land records if we can get this lady's information.
You say that you can?
If I can, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any more information you want? It's just, I've been dealing with it three years, Susan McCullough and Buchanan, Chris Booth here, Lisa May here, Hurtin Prophet. And the excuses that I've been given was like GIS has it with somebody else's name, and that's why you can't get it changed, like GIS feeds your tax records. You feed the tax records to GIS, and I've just gotten nowhere.
Do you all have a means of communicating? I have the address here.
Do you have an email on there?
Is the phone number on that?
Okay, and I have. The survey information is in the deed. I have had the land surveyed unofficially by Ballswin Associates. Chris Booth has all of that. And Chris Booth confirmed that what's depicted in the deed is that building there blighted. But it's that property. It's not the empty space over two lots over.
Would you write your phone number on here? You've got your email, but if we could have your phone number, too?
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming forward. I had no idea. It's okay. I'll apologize.
Let me pass this on.
Let me write down.
Did you? Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
No.
God bless.
Last item that I have under citizen comments. Any citizens here who would like to make a comment? I think we have one item left, and that is board member comments. Board is open. No one has any comments. I'll make a couple.
I have comments.
Oh, you do? Okay. No, you go ahead.
All right. I just have a couple things. I want to, again, welcome our two new colleagues. We did it informally last month when they were in the audience, and it's great to have you up here with us. So welcome to both of you. I want to remind everybody about the State of the County address, which is going to be February first. You can attend virtually or you can attend here in person. We're going to start with a light breakfast at seven-thirty. So look online on the Bodotac County website for more details about that. We're doing a different kind of address this year to be a little more interactive, and we're bringing up some of our staff members to present the good work that they're doing. So I hope we can get really great participation in that. I also want to make sure everyone's aware, and we have Anna here today, that there are ongoing county meetings around school discussions. These are just public forums for people to come and learn about the status of some of our schools and share ideas. No decisions are being made at these. No decisions have been made. But this is a great opportunity for public input. We are doing them in each district. Unfortunately, the weather. We had one that went off without a hitch, and then the weather, as it is January and February, got us on the Eagle Rock one, but it has been rescheduled. Is it tonight, tomorrow night? The twenty-ninth, and Buchanan is the thirtieth. So we have two next week. So please look on the website as well for those dates, and we really want to encourage folks to come out. And if you do nothing but listen and learn. folks to come out. And if you do nothing but listen and learn, that is wonderful. So I just wanted to bring those two things to light.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure thing.
That State of the County is obviously an important and will be a very informative presentation. So mark your calendars for that. Comments I have, I wanted to add to what Supervisor White said about welcoming Mr. Michael and and Mr. Nicely. Glad to have you all here. And I would like to say once again, thank you for your chairmanship, Dr. Scott Horn, and it's great to know that you're doing so well.
Thank you. Thank you.
We did have Mr. Lock, Mr. Lock, would this be the time now to bring up the virtual meetings? Or you want to wait till the evening?
At what point are you leaving, Dr. Scott Horn?
I I mean, I can't miss the the for you.
I was gonna say, I mean, I thought you might leave and the and your video might get turned off. I didn't.
That's an idea.
I I would wait until after you reconvene at the 6:00 PM public hearing meeting.
Okay. Okay. The other comment I had is I wanted to thank the board members for the confidence you're showing in me by allowing me to be chairman. It is indeed an honor because this is and traditionally, the Board of Supervisors in Bodotac County has been excellent and has really exceeded I would say any other board that I'm aware of, at least in this area. So I consider it a privilege and an honor and thank you for the confidence. And that concludes my remarks. No, it doesn't. Moral of business like ours, this is something that Dr. Scott Horn and I talked about. He's he's the board representative on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And we're discussing the idea that maybe this is the year to really elevate. It's been doing fine. But with the changes in the county, the demographic changes, new people coming in, apartment dwellers that don't have spaces for recreation. This may be a good time to really begin to emphasize, over emphasize perhaps Parks and Recreation and see what we can do to make that part of our our budget to move that forward. Mandy, I assume you'd appreciate you would agree with that. So we'll try to do that. I think it's something that maybe has lost some momentum and let's let's get it back again. Are Scott Horn any comments on that?
And and one of the things, I mean, we certainly have a lot of these apartments going up and these is young individuals and even the elderly need to sit there and have a place to go. You know, you questioned, do you look for that spot next to it? Do you look for those areas that are condensed into that area and have it a public area? That's that's a question that we all need to look at in in what land we're going to be looking for. So certainly some work to be done. It it certainly would be a nice strategic plan if we can get together. Certainly the board and Park and Rec would be fantastic if we can do something like that. So look forward to it. Look forward to the the new thoughts and ideas that even the public may have for this. So we'll be talking.
Well, that concludes everything but the Freedom of Information Training. Let's take a break. Mike, how much time do you need to set up any 15 minute break? Would that be good?
Oh, 15 would be plenty, sir.
Okay, so it's, let's say it's 3:30 now. Let's be back a quarter till four and we'll do the Freedom of Information Annual Briefing. Thank you, everyone.
You're all welcome to stay.
Yeah.
I think we'll see what's clear out.